Which is kind of fast.
Ready to go? Good evening. Is my microphone on this time? It is. Perfect. Good evening. The Wayzata Public Schools Regular Board Meeting for Monday, March 14th will please come to order. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Milin Sahoni.
Here.
Linda Cohen.
Here.
Jay Hesby.
Here.
Heidi Kater.
Here.
Bonita Lucky. Here. Cheryl Pozine.
Here.
Chase Anderson.
Here.
Sarah Johansson.
Here.
All right. We are all here. Welcome, everyone. I love board meetings where I have a sea of Wayzata blue sitting in the front rows. So it's so exciting to see you here. The first item on our agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda items. Our consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or a citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. The consent agenda items were listed in the board packet, and the recommended action is to approve the agenda and the consent agenda items. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, and I think it's a roll call vote.
Cheryl Pozine.
Yes.
Milin Sahoni.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Jay Hesby.
Yes.
Heidi Kater.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky. Yes. Sarah Johansson.
Yes. Wonderful. We have an agenda. And before we move on to the items on the agenda, I wanted to make a quick reminder, if you are planning to address the school board this evening, please be sure to complete a written request to speak. And if you have not done so already, you can get one from Tammy, who is sitting at the table to the right. So the first item on our agenda is reports from organizations, and I'll invite our student council representative to come on up.
Hi, everyone. So last time we talked, we had staff appreciation, and we finished that up last month, and it was awesome. We had a huge success. Students were decorating the floor offices, and they also decorated teachers' doors with notes. And I think the staff really enjoyed that. Secondly, we have our updated mascot voted on by the student body, and we'll be moving forward with that for the next year with bringing that mascot out to different events, such as sporting events and things like theater and stuff like that. We also have our school-wide March Madness beginning, and we have students filling out brackets. We've also sent those to you guys, so if you'd like to fill those out, feel free to do that. And that'll be coming to an end shortly as well. And then our survivor event is coming up. Applications, we're due for that today. So we'll have students participating in that as well, and then we'll be running that on our social media for everyone to see. In sports, obviously, our gymnastics team has won state. Girls' basketball finished second in sections, and the boys are still competing. And then spring sports are starting up, beginning with track today. And then finally, our science Olympia team also won a state championship.
Fantastic. Thank you. Board colleagues, do we have any questions? You guys are busy doing Peace Day as well.
Yep, Peace Day is coming up, too. I think we're getting it organized with each of the middle schools and then assigning the peace leaders to each of them.
And I did forward the link to the bracket, guys, so get going. Thank you so much.
Of course.
See you next month. All right. And to follow that highlight of the evening, we will move now to recognitions, and I'll join Dr. Anderson at the podium.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome. My name is Chase Anderson, and I'm the superintendent for the school district. And it's always my honor to convene the recognitions portion of our school board meetings. And we have three recognitions this evening, so we're real excited to recognize staff and students and retirees. And we're going to start with our employee of the month, and I'd like to invite Trina Snow to come forward. Trina, congratulations. I'm going to read a little bit of a script here about what was submitted on her behalf for this honor, and then give Trina an opportunity to share a few thoughts as well. Birchview Elementary School is proud to nominate Trina Snow, third-grade teacher, as the March Employee of the Month for Wayzata Public Schools. Trina exemplifies what it means to be a true Birchview Bobcat and an exceptional educator in every way. Fortunately for students and staff at Birchview, we get to witness how amazing she is each and every day at our school. Mrs. Snow is student-centered in her work. She always sees the best in students and works relentlessly to make sure that all student needs are met, no matter what. Her commitment to providing students with the very best experience is unwavering, and we are lucky to have her on our team. Mrs. Snow fosters a warm, welcoming, nurturing, and positive classroom environment. You can feel this as you walk through her classroom. Every student matters in her room. Learning is fun and engaging. She creates meaningful partnerships with her families to support students. Whether it is a phone call, an email, or scheduling to meet with a family after school hours, she always goes above and beyond in her work for students. Besides being an exceptional teacher, she's a phenomenal colleague. She is there to support her colleagues and team whenever needed. She is always willing to do what it takes for our school. Trina serves on her leadership team and team leader for the third-grade team. Her attention to detail, problem-solving ability, and genuine care for students always stand out when working with her. Mrs. Snow is an ultimate team player. To end, here are a few more words about Mrs. Snow from a student, a colleague, and a parent. From the student: "Mrs. Snow is the best teacher I've ever had because she is very kind and very patient. She always helps provoke people on tests by reading the problem. She always makes sure to say hi to everyone in the morning. She makes sure that we get what we need even when we may miss a fun activity. My favorite moment with Mrs. Snow is when she went tubing with us. That is why she's the best." From a colleague: "Trina is an amazing teammate and colleague. She is supportive, innovative, and solution-oriented. Trina wants what's best for each of her students and is committed to helping them achieve their goals." From a parent: "As a committed, child-centered educator, Mrs. Snow makes her classroom inviting, safe, inclusive, and engaging. Mrs. Snow consistently and thoughtfully goes above and beyond for her students, their families, and her peers. As a result, trust, respect, connection, and appreciation grow across within the entire Birchview community. I was fortunate enough as a parent to get to observe many of Mrs. Snow's lessons and classroom interactions during distance learning. There isn't an adjective that can articulate the impact of the incredible environment she creates for her students and their families. A few examples: sending custom notes and material pickups, padlet fun to celebrate accomplishments, and her authentic communication emails made everybody around her feel like they matter. The way Mrs. Snow leads by example is why she is a beloved, one-in-a-million teacher. And with that, the Birchview Elementary School is thrilled to recognize Trina Snow as our March Employee of the Month. And she has quite a contingent of colleagues here tonight. Thank you for coming. She is very deserving of this recognition for her hard work and dedication. Trina, congratulations. The mic is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, and the members of the Wayzata School Board. It is an honor and a privilege to represent Birchview Elementary School tonight. I have been fortunate to be an educator in our district for 11 years, third grade and fifth grade both at Birchview. And in that time, I've been surrounded by student-centered colleagues, supportive asset- framing leadership across the district, and families and students that represent the rich and diverse cultures of our growing community. When people say Birchview is a special place, it really is. Our students are at the heart of everything we do. The four-classroom pod setting creates a community that is unlike any school environment that I've ever been a part of. You are constantly communicating and working closely with not only your colleagues but students across the grade level. We learn together, make decisions together, problem-solve together. We work through the hard moments and then celebrate the small moments, too. Together, we take risks and strive to be better versions of what we were today to meet the changing needs of our students tomorrow. Together, our students work to question the world around them, listen and think more deeply, and be a community that cares for one another. I want to thank my incredible principal, Ashley Farrington, for this nomination and his unwavering commitment and leadership during the past two years. Becoming a principal during a pandemic is no easy feat, and your leadership matters, and we're so thankful that you're here. To my wonderful teammates, Brooke Gibbs and Megan Trudell, thank you for being amazing, and all of my colleagues that support me every day. Thank you to our wonderful Birchview families. I feel honored that you send your kids to us every day. I want to thank my husband, Sean, for marrying a teacher. That's hard. There's a lot of sacrifices he makes every day, and my kids to put up with having a teacher as a mom and sneaking all these little lessons in every day. They're amazing. So you all made this possible, and I just thank you so much. Thank you.
Congratulations again, Trina and colleagues. Thanks so much for being here tonight. We appreciate it. Our next recognition this evening is to announce the names of three retirees, and they are the following. Dan Quam, custodian, Central Services, 25 years. Julie Tummanen, art teacher, Central Middle School, 27 years. And Judy Rogers, DAP teacher in the district for Birchview, Gleason Lake, Meadow Ridge, Sunset Hill for 25 years. I didn't spot any of these people here, but if you're here and you want to give a wave or make a comment, you certainly can. But I don't think any of them are here. They're probably watching on YouTube. So let's give them a round of applause. And next, another really exciting recognition this evening. I'd like to invite forward all of our Wayzata High School gymnastics coaches and athletes, our state champions. They act so shy after all the acrobatics and everything they do. Come on up. Congratulations. I'm going to share a little bit and then invite the coaches to share whatever else that they may wish to share as well about the team. So I'll start with the following. "The Trojans started out the state championship meet on the floor exercise, their highest-scoring event all season long. They hit five-for-five, but felt their routines were underscored. Izzy Hayden led the team with a 9.3, followed by Sasha Arnie with a 9.275, and Tatum Bolson with a 9.175. They left the first rotation disappointed and knew a mind shift was needed. They headed to vault for the second rotation, ready to stick some vaults and have some fun. Roshni Palani Swami led the team off with an 8.95, followed by Ella Milo scoring an 8.975. Sasha, Izzy, and Ashley Moinga rounded out the vault rotation, all scoring above 9.0. The Trojans rotated to the uneven bars for their third rotation, knowing that they needed a big score as they were in second place behind New Prague. Ashley led the team off with an 8.9. McKenna Cohen and Michaela Lundvall followed with their best bar routines of the season, earning career highs of 9.225 and 9.2 respectively, both sticking their dismounts. Kylie Ufile anchored the bar team, earning a 9.075, resulting in a team bar score of 36.40, the highest team bar score of the competition. The Trojans ended the competition on the balance beam, widely known as the make-it-or-break-it event in gymnastics. The coaches watched New Prague tackle the beam right before them knowing they were seven tenths behind them heading into the last rotation. The team knew they needed a near-perfect wiggle-free beam set, and that is exactly what they did. Marissa Dennis off the beam team with a career-high score of 9.125, setting the pace for her teammates to follow. Michaela and Izzy were next, earning a 9.1 and a 9.175 respectively. Sasha was in the fourth spot and completed a near-perfect routine, earning a 9.30. Ashley rounded out the competition, earning a 9.0. The moment Ashley dismounted off the balance beam, the coaches knew it was going to be close. Had they done enough? Did they just make history? The coaches checked the final scores, and it showed the Trojans in first place with a final team score of 146.2. The girls waited on the floor as each school was announced before them. When it got to second place, they were all holding hands, awaiting to hear if the announcer said New Prague or Wayzata. When New Prague was announced in second place, the team knew it was official. They had won their first-ever gymnastics state title in school history. 2022 Class AA Gymnastics State Champions, the Wayzata Trojans." And I'll turn it over to coaches to make a few comments. Congratulations, girls, and coaches and parents. Well done.
I think that summary was a perfect example of what our team went through that day. It was a lot of ups and a lot of downs, but I am an alumni, as is Georgie, our other assistant of Wayzata, and I can truly say I've never been more proud to be a Wayzata Trojan. So thank you for honoring us. This is a once-in-a-lifetime, and we are very honored to be the first, and nobody can ever take that away from us. So thank you.
Now I'll introduce. So we have Michaela Lundvall, Tatum Bolson, Kylie Ufile, Ella Milo, Roshni Palani Swami, McKenna Cohen, Marissa Dennis, Sasha Arnie, Izzy Hayden, Ashley Moinga, assistant coach Abby Christensen, and assistant coach Georgie Macklem.
Captains, you want to say anything to talk about that night?
Now's your chance.
Sasha. Come on. Tell your perspective of that day.
Just wing it.
I was just super proud of how everybody did. Everybody had their best meets of their lives, and it really paid off the entire season. So yeah.
Well, again, congratulations. Most of us who played high school sports always wanted to be a state champion, but we never got there. And now you guys can brag about it forever. So it's a really nice honor. And thank you so much for all your hard work and your dedication, coaches. Thank you. I know it's, I don't know how many hours a week it is that our coaches commit, but it's more than five, right? Yeah.
Yes.
Probably like 35 or 40 or something like that. It's a second full-time job. So we really appreciate your great efforts. And, girls, congratulations. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
And we'll get a photo over here with everybody together. Thanks again.
All right, Mr. Sahoni, did you want to say something?
Yes, I do. First of all, congratulations, everyone, for winning. I was hoping that at least some of you would come, you know, making somersaults to the podium, but wishing you all end up on the U.S. Olympics team. Good luck.
Congratulations, everyone. We will now move into the audience opportunity to address the board. I do not have any forms. Do you have any forms? Okay. There is no one here to address the school board this evening. So moving from that, this is always fun. We're going to go from exciting recognitions to policies. And Dr. Flansberg, we'll turn it over to you.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Attached for your review are the following policies and regulations for your consideration. The policies and regulations were reviewed as part of the regular review cycle and using the Minnesota School Board Association Model Policy when available. By district administration and other district stakeholders where necessary. Final review is completed by the policy committee of the school board. Changes are indicated by an underline or strike-through notation in the attachments. There are the policies 208 through 227 and policies 301 through 310. Please note, policies 215, 16, 17, 18, 19, 21, 24, and 26 under the 200 series do not exist, and policies 304 and 309 do not exist under the 300 series. Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you very much. So the recommended action before you, board colleagues, is to approve the policies as presented in the board packet. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved. I second.
All right. Would the maker of the motion like to approve the policies for the first reading, in which they'll come back for a second? Or would you like to waive the first reading and approve for second and final reading?
I would like to waive and approve for a second and final reading.
All right. And would the secondar also agree to waiving the first reading and approving the policies for second and final?
I do.
All right. So the policies have been moved and seconded for final approval, and this, I think, is a routine vote. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Okay. I would just like to remind the audience and our public that these policies, many of them have been worked on in policy committee at boardwork sessions and other things over a series of months. I would like to thank Dr. Flansberg and Tammy as the administrators, who worked really hard to just make sure that our policies were checked along Model Policy and checked against district protocol and board protocol and wordsmithed and comma-checked and all things that make them the professional documents that they are. So thank you to that, and thank you to the policy committee and the various committees also that looked at these. Okay. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor of approving the recommended action, which consists of the 200 policies, the 300 policies, and 617 for final approval? Please say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. All right. And moving on, I will turn it over to Dr. Anderson for a bit of a pandemic update.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, we're going to give a brief pandemic update. It'll probably be one of the shorter COVID updates that we've had. There's not a lot to report on, other than I wanted to put the most recent metrics up for your review and to share a few insights and thoughts. There was a narrative document in the board packet as well. I won't speak to length on that tonight, but just as a reminder, you were provided with that information, and that is in the board packet as well. So as I've shared at all of the COVID updates throughout the course of the year, we had these two primary goals throughout the course of the year, ensuring the health and well-being of students and staff and keeping students in school every day throughout the course of the school year. This is one of the district dashboards, and it shows the cumulative total student and staff cases from February 2nd through March 9th. So I shared that I would be sharing a few of the metrics and having mostly, I think, news that will demonstrate that COVID numbers locally, statewide, in Hennepin County and statewide, are trending in a really good direction. And it's pretty remarkable, really, how much has changed in the last six weeks even, as can be shown on this. So the bottom yellow shaded numbers are the combined total of staff and student positive cases. And if you look at the far-left column back to February 2nd, I can't see what that says. I think it's 285 or somewhere thereabouts, 205, 285. And it was down to 15 in the most recent week. So the bar graph to the right really shows that the trend is heading in the right direction. And some of the following slides are going to demonstrate the same. So this is a national graphic from February 24th. The goal is to get more green. And yellow is kind of moderate, and the orange is where there's still pretty high levels of COVID levels by county. So this is February 24th. This is March 3rd. You can see a lot more green. And then a week later, March 10th, there's a lot of green throughout the country. So again, nationally, heading in the right direction. Minnesota is mostly green at this point, a few spackles of yellow in the southeast part of the state. But again, in general, really heading in the right direction. I've used this graphic for the last couple of years, actually, as we've tracked the local numbers. And these are the cities that primarily comprise the footprint of the school district. Again, the color codes, red represents high transmission, orange substantial, yellow moderate, and green is low. So we haven't quite worked our way into the low category yet, but I won't be surprised if next week or the week after we have some of the far-right columns shaded in green. So you can see the trend lines in the far-right column shaded in yellow, continuous downturn for each of the individual cities, as well as the average that's shown by the last graphic. This is one of the new metrics that has come out that I believe was put together by the CDC, and it represents a couple of different metrics. It represents the, kind of what we refer to oftentimes as the Wolfson number, but that's the local provider of county data within the state of Minnesota. But this is a national metric that's utilized, and they've established three levels, low, medium, and high. And on the far-left column, it indicates that if that number is fewer than 200 or more than 200, then it breaks it off into two categories. And then that middle column, which I found the information a little bit challenging to find, are the number of hospitalizations and available inpatient beds. So it's kind of a double-pronged metric that is currently being utilized. So we're awaiting to get some additional narrative in the CDC guidance to get that updated. This metric has been prepared and generally being used, but there's supposed to be some updated guidance for schools coming out here in the near future. And I'll speak about that a little bit more in a following slide. So I'd referenced earlier the Wolfson numbers. I know the board members are all very familiar with these data points. On the schematic on the left is Hennepin County, and on the right is the Wayzata School District. So we were at numbers that were well over 1,000 into 1486 for Hennepin County back on January 23rd, and 1,560 on January 20th for the school district. And if you reflect back on the metric that I just showed, if you look on that first column to the left, fewer than 200 puts it in that lower category, and more than 200 puts it in a higher category, obviously, and calling for some additional mitigation strategies. But for Hennepin County currently, and I'll show you the Wolfson slide on that here in a minute. You can see on the left, that number most recently was at 67. Compare that to the over 1,500 that we were at back in January and into February. And Wayzata Public Schools is at 80 currently. So again, this is the cities that comprise the school district, heading in a really good trend. good trend. I shared those slides. Oops, I'm going the wrong direction here. And then I was starting to work through this. So, January 23rd, I'll just use Hennepin County because the school district kind of tracks along with that. We were at 1,486 on February 11th, 393; February 25th, 146; and on March 10th, 67. So, you can see the trend lines on both for the Hennepin County and the school district working their way downward. We received this back on February 25th, and this is the point I made earlier, we're awaiting to get some additional guidance to get clarification on this. But you'll probably recall when the new guidance came out, where they discontinued the requirement for school bus riders to wear masks, and it became optional or recommended, but not required any longer. And I'll read the red sentence and then speak a little bit of that. But the CDC is making this change to align with updated guidance that no longer recommends universal indoor mask-wearing in K-12 schools and early education settings in areas with a low or medium COVID-19 community level. So, if you think back to that green and yellow that I showed you on that new metric a little bit ago, that's what the low or medium is referring to. And then I pulled out that sentence and wanted to highlight and note where it said "to align with updated guidance." Well, that's the part that we're waiting for, is we don't have the updated guidance yet. This came out, I guess, about two, three weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago, and we've been awaiting some updated guidance on, particularly for us, the pre-K. I mean, we've already taken action on what to do with K through 12. We made the change on buses, and the only thing that we're kind of holding on yet is pre-K, and I'll speak to that again in a moment. But the only reason at this point for further delay is that we just want to find out what the guidance says. So, that leads to recommendation. So, myself and Associate Superintendent Nate Flansberg will work closely with Jenny Ebert, who's our Director of Community Education, and as you know, she oversees our early education programs, and Jody Remsing, who oversees our early childhood special education program. So, we'll work closely with them in determining how to best move forward for the district's early childhood students. We'll watch for this anticipated CDC guidance that we've been kind of waiting for now for a couple of weeks, and to the best of my knowledge, it's still not out there, although I've looked and I've inquired with leaders of our state organizations, and no one seems to be able to find the updated guidance on the CDC website. So, I'm thinking that they're still working on it, and we hope that that will come out soon. If and when that comes out, and if it's decided by us to move forward with implementing recommended or required masking for pre-K students, then we'll make that decision and communicate that to our early education families. And if we don't get more guidance from CDC, then we're just going to have to consider the local conditions, which I've shared with you, and try to learn from surrounding school districts. Right now, it's kind of a mix, I think. Some school districts are not requiring masking pre-K through 12. Others are still requiring for pre-K through 12. Some have made the change to recommended but not required for some levels of their K-12 program and not the pre-K, so we're kind of in that camp right now. And part of the reason that we've put this delay on is back in August, when we presented to you about our opening of school protocols, we indicated that, you know, a point where reconsideration will be made is at that point where enough duration has passed that a student of any particular age would have been able to have gotten the full series of vaccinations. And so, that's why we're somewhat on hold. We were anticipating in February, they were talking very optimistically that a vaccination for pre-K kids was just around the corner. Well, then that fell through, and it got delayed. So, it's kind of causing us to rethink that a little bit and trying to decide if that's still a reasonable ambition or goal to hold off until that vaccination's available. But we think that if we can get a little clarification on this guidance that we're awaiting, that'll be really helpful for us, and then we can work with Jenny and Jody and their teams and make a good decision for how to best move forward with pre-K. So, that's the latest with that, and that's pretty much what I wanted to share with you tonight. Otherwise, we're, you know, we're holding with status quo on the decisions that we've recently made. I think the metrics and the numbers that we showed paralleled and aligned really well with what the projections were and the predictions were for COVID rates, and we'll continue to hope for the best, that they'll stay this low through the end of the year and beyond. But as always, we're always monitoring, and we'll continue to make decisions that we feel are in the best interest of our students. So, I don't know if Dr. Flansberg had any gaps to fill in, or did we cover most of the pertinent? We covered it. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to you, and if you have any questions, we'll do our best to respond to those.
All right, thank you so much. Board colleagues, questions? I'm looking back and forth. Cheryl, was that nodding a question?
Well, I'm just curious, how long is soon? I mean, how long will you be waiting for extended, you know, CDC, you know, more details on their guidance?
Right. Well, that's a good question. That is a qualitative term. I don't know that I have a specific number of days assigned to that, but, you know, if you think in terms of, will it, you know, be a week or a month? I'd say probably closer to a week, and I'm hoping that maybe this week, some guidance will come out, so that we have an opportunity to see what it says beyond just that one sentence, because they're really not very definitive on what they spelled out, and it referred to guidance, which no one can seem to find, so we're hoping that we can find that. So, but we would like to, if we're going to move in this direction, and if Jenny and Jody feel that it's consistent with what would make sense for moving forward with our early ed, I would say that we'll be looking to make that decision sometime in the coming couple of weeks, if it seems appropriate to do so.
Other questions? I do have to add that I was looking at the CDC website today, looking for it, and I went to the updated guidance about early childhood, and it was at the same date, or is, you know, after the February 25th, and it was still recommending universal masking for an early childhood. And so, it feels as this has a couple of times in this pandemic. And, you know, we hired you to lead our educational system, not to become an epidemiologist, and your biology degree has gotten you far, but at this moment, it's difficult when the medical leaders aren't giving that clarity, and so thank you for seeking that clarity. And we will just look forward to waiting for your statement. Oh, Dr. Sahoney?
Yeah, I just want to remind everybody that today, I think, is the second anniversary of COVID.
Oh, thank you for that.
Been a long journey, painful for a lot of us, and I thank the school district, Dr. Anderson, the teachers, and the students, and the families for hanging in there.
Yeah, thank you for that reminder. It's been a real challenging two years, to say the least, for everybody, and we appreciate everybody's patience and for working with us, too.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now, I see, ready to come over to join us is our Executive Director of Finance and Operations, DeeDee Carring.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Anderson. I just want to go over a couple of things on our financial reports. You've had the documents in front of you, and you have both the revenue and expense. Just talk a little bit about the revenue. Overall, the revenues are consistent with prior years, except with community education, food service, and debt service, so it's been that same common theme. You've heard every board meeting that we've brought these forward to, but just one thing I wanted to note this time on nutrition services or food services. You'll note in there, in January, the U.S. Department of Agriculture announced reimbursement rates for program year 2022, and the district will receive an additional 25 cents for each reimbursable lunch served for the remainder of the fiscal year. The district will also receive one-time supply chain assistance funds from the federal government, and these additional revenues will be adjusted in an upcoming budget revision in the future. So, this is good news for the Food Nutrition Department. On the expenditure side, again, overall expenditures are consistent with the prior years, except a couple of items. In the general fund, the items were addressed in the budget that you revised at the last board meeting for the general fund. So, those items that were talked and discussed in here had been addressed in the revision that you did at the last month. So, other than that, I don't have any further comments on the budget or financial statements that were brought forward to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Board colleagues, are there any comments or questions? How fantastic to hear. Good news, and more money, not less money. That's a bonus for tonight. Thank you for sharing that.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Okay, we can move on to the next.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Superintendent Anderson. Tonight, we're going to be talking about the Hollydale Golf Course, which is under development, will result in approximately 229 new homes. Tonight, we have with me Kristin Tollison, Director of Administrative Services, and Kristin will walk us through the proposed school assignment for this neighborhood under development. So, I'm going to turn that over to Kristin.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. As, oh, sorry, as DeeDee Carring shared, we have a large-scale new development coming on board. A little bit of background for you, the last comprehensive boundary change, I'm too tall. That's the problem. The last comprehensive boundary change was implemented in the fall of 2019 with the opening of Northwoods Elementary School. At that time, we noted that the school of attendance for all new housing would be determined at the time of development. So, you'll actually see on some of our attendance maps at that time that we had crosshatching. Because we were growing at such a rapid pace and focused so much on the north and the west part of our school district, that we were concerned that we may have to do what we did in prior years, which was some hopscotching or some directed assignments. As I said, ongoing growth in the north and the west affects specific schools, so I know you're all aware, but we do not have even growth across our district. We've grown from the southeast to the northwest, and that continues to put additional pressure on the north and the west schools. And even with the growth, we have been able to maintain feeder schools from elementary to middle school. So, we were able to adjust our boundaries when we opened up Meadow Ridge. That was the first time we were able to have true feeder schools, so that the entire elementary school does attend a middle school in its entirety. The new development is the former Hollydale Golf Course. It is under development at this time. They are anticipating approximately 229 new homes. Past housing studies with Dick Carlstrom and Hazel Reinhardt will tell us that we can expect slightly less than one new student per home at the time of occupancy. That doesn't mean there will be siblings. That doesn't mean that we will immediately have, you know, a child in every home, but across developments of this size at this price range, history has taught us about .92 children from each home. This is a largely contained development. Because it was the golf course, it doesn't have a lot of access in and out, and it does lie within the current boundaries for Kimberly Lane and Central Middle School. I bring a map just to give you an orientation, so you can reflect. As you can see, in the pink in the upper central, that is the Kimberly Lane boundaries. Hollydale Golf Course is the nice bright green right in the middle. I'll also just remind everyone that Greenwood and Gleason Lake are the two elementary schools that feed to West Middle School, and Plymouth Creek and Sunset Hill are the two schools that feed to East Middle School. And then we have five elementary schools that feed to Central: Northwoods, Meadow Ridge, Oakwood, Birchview, and what did I miss? Kimberly Lane. We studied a variety of options, three of them in particular we focused on: Kimberly Lane Central Middle School, Kimberly Lane with an East Middle School assignment, which would not stay true to the feeder schools, or a Plymouth Creek East Middle School assignment. And I know that the members of the board have seen this data in the past, but what this is, is if we had the entire development occupied next year, which is not how developments happen, they happen over a series of one, two, three years, but if this commodity, this development, became, you know, the go-to, and all 229 houses were developed all in the year, and we received our one child per home on average, we just tested the threshold of all of our schools, or tested the threshold of Kimberly Lane and Plymouth Creek, as well as Central and East. What this diagram is showing you is the 229 students. Again, I just want to stress, we're not going to have 229 children next year from the development, but we wanted to make sure that if, I don't want to say worst-case scenario, if everything went really quickly, we could tolerate, or we had the room wherever we placed the students, because we would not want to divide that development into two sections. The yellow is the grades. The blue is just placing the 229 Hollydale students across the district. Again, typically, our families come with preschool and elementary age, but there are students across the scope and the spectrum, so we did place those students. And then we took, I believe it was our January 1 enrollment, and placed those students. So, as if we immediately built all the homes, built all the roads, and put 229 children in, and then put those children in our schools. As you can see, for Kimberly Lane, the first column after the blue is the current, and then we did Kimberly Lane with the Hollydale students. Next to that is Plymouth Creek current, and then Plymouth Creek with the Hollydale students. The green is the total, and you can see at the bottom the ideal capacity for those two buildings. Ideal capacity, just to reference, does not change the flow or the dynamics in the building. It's a pull-out art, pull-out music, Spanish, all the different things that allow the flexibility. So, 720 is an ideal number, and it can stretch as high as 780 if we needed to. So, as you can see from that information, the students coming from Hollydale could be comfortably placed at Kimberly Lane or at Plymouth Creek. Then if you focus on the next box to the right, it's the same demographics with the middle school. If you look at Central Middle School current, Central Middle School with Hollydale, East current, and East with Hollydale. Again, it does fit in both of our schools comfortably. I think one of the things that I'll talk about in a moment is just that I know that we are mindful of the discrepancies between our school sizes, with east and west being significantly smaller than east. Any questions on the chart before I move forward? Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Oh, Dr. Sahoney.
Yeah, sorry, I don't know if I missed this at the work session that I presented this. The first column, or the second column on the left, shows 150 students, and you said there were 229 from the?
If you add the 49 in the middle school and the high school.
Oh, the high school, okay.
Yeah, so it's 229 spread across pre-K through 12.
Okay, and the high school is not listed here, correct?
Correct.
Correct. I'm sorry. We have very few families that move in with high school, so the students are spread out pre-K through middle school.
Very good. Thank you.
Sorry, yes, thank you for that question. That's a good point, yes. So, some other considerations that we had: Northwoods continues to see robust growth and may require a boundary adjustment in the future. That continues to have significant growth from the Corcoran area, and that is not ending anytime soon, and so that building may need a boundary revision. I can see that on the horizon. Central Middle School is significantly larger than East and West Middle Schools, and East Middle School is slightly below an ideal number. East Middle School would operate more efficiently with more students. Because of the teaming of the different blue team, gold team, and the way that they organize their students, there are some optimal numbers, and East has a tendency to drift slightly below that optimal number for efficiency. So, with that information, our recommendation, Dr., not Dr. Carring, I just promoted you. DeeDee Carring and myself, our recommendation would be to align Hollydale Homes with Plymouth Creek and East. This does maintain our feeder school system. It does increase the population at East, which will allow that to run more efficiently, and it leaves capacity to the west for continued growth. So, it allows capacity in the future if we need to move either Northwoods and/or Greenwood students to the east. And lastly, I just want to let you know that we had reviewed this with transportation, because it isn't a true, you know, it is slightly not in the same boundary. Transportation has reviewed the information and can be efficient with that as well. So, I will stand for any questions.
All right, thank you very much. I think this is, what, 12 years?
I think this is, what, 12 years now, 12 or 13 years that you've been doing this?
Yes, yes.
You've learned some really important tricks of the trade, so when you tell us that this is what our patterns show, we trust that you've flipped those patterns.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Board colleagues, questions or comments? Cheryl?
Thank you. Thank you, Kristin, for your great work. You always do such a good job, because you're so detail-oriented, so I know I have true confidence that you've looked at every scenario, and I have confidence in the recommendation. I just wanted to reiterate what you said, that transportation did review this, and they see no issues with it.
Correct. Just, I think I highlighted earlier, the two schools are very close. They are mirror images and in very close proximity to each other, and the way that the development will come out, you know, there aren't, it is, like I said, more of a self-contained neighborhood than some of our other neighborhoods that have, you know, entrances on many, many different sides.
Thank you.
Dr. Sahoney?
Yes, Kristin, thank you for all the good work. I think one of the slides showed that Kimberly Lane is a feeder for East Middle School?
For Central Middle School.
Wasn't one of the, there were three options, and then middle one, was that not an ideal option?
The middle one is less than ideal. Because we did study it, that was one of the things we discussed early, was, did it make sense for them to go to Kimberly Lane, because it's a part of the Kimberly Lane boundary, but then go to East? Because we know that Central is significantly larger than East, and East is below an optimal number. I think that there were some concerns by school board members, that although people moving in would understand that, after five years of being a part of Kimberly Lane, and then knowing that you're going to East when everyone else would go to Central, would probably be a difficult time, and it might cause some angst among families. So that was one of the things we ended up kind of ruling out, is that it was not a true, did not align with the feeder schools.
Would it also be appropriate to say or think that this would reduce the pressure on Central Middle School?
Correct, absolutely.
Good.
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? No? Okay. Well, thank you very much. DeeDee, we'll let you do some wrap-up before we?
Just a couple of other notes, too. As most of you know, this was brought forward to the Facilities Committee of the Board, and brought forward previously, and studied by administration, and I do want to thank Kristin for her work on this. She does a great job, and she explains it very well, so thank you, thank you for that. So this would be brought forward at another board meeting for approval.
We have a recommended action in the board packet.
Sorry.
Do you want us to do that? We did indeed bring it to a board work session, and we did talk about it.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I didn't bring the full sheet up here, so thank you, yes.
We can get this done for you. I think your to-do list is, we'll have enough other things to do, right? And I am aware that there are families that are asking, right? So that's another thank you to Kristin for bringing this forward, so that the families that are looking at that. Okay, so, board colleagues, the recommended action is to approve the proposed request to align the Hollydale Development with Plymouth Creek Elementary and East Middle School effective immediately. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, and because we have to do this again, is there any discussion? I want to say thank you to the Finance Committee, and I guess I do just want to do a shout-out to, to, what was I going to say? The work that was done from there, and the commitment to the district for contiguous boundaries. We don't have, if we notice, there's a few that are not that way. We know that, we appreciate the Welcome Center's commitment to thinking forward and anticipating some of the trends, and doing your best to arrange our chairs in a way that can be as long-lasting as possible, so thank you so much for that. Okay, it's just a general vote. So all in favor of approving the proposal to align the Hollydale Development with Plymouth Creek and East Middle School effective immediately, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Chair votes aye. The motion carries unanimously. All right, and next, we have no Human Resources Services, and then we have a board report. Is there anyone that has a board report at this moment? No? Okay. I wanted to, I have one board report, and that board report is that we are having some technical difficulties, and so anyone that's receiving some communication knows that. We are sorry that the audio livestream is not working. We certainly apologize for these little glitches, and the video recording will be available on our website tomorrow, so just know we're sorry if you were watching it tonight, and we will get that taken care of, and thanks to everyone who's been trying to troubleshoot this throughout the evening. It's great work on the fly. Okay. And with that, before 8:00 PM, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I shall move.
Second.
Mr. Hasbey wanted that, too. All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We are adjourned.